All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Brookfield Select Board Meeting for April 20, 2023. Please rise to say to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So I'm going to pass over the announcements and warrant approvals for now. We'll come back to that. Can I get a motion to move into executive session under exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental detrimental effect on bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares? I do so declare. And this is for the active litigation discussion.
You have that motion, and I also move that after executive session, we reconvene into open session. Is that right, Kelly?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, Kopp and I?
Kudelski.
Regan, aye.
All right. Thank you. We're going to adjourn here and go to an alternate location. We'll be back as soon as we can be. All right. Welcome back. We're reconvening in our open session for the Select Board Meeting for April 20, 2023. Announcements, the public is invited to attend an Arbor Day event at 1:00 PM Sunday, April 30, at Brookfield Police Station, 7 Proud East Street, hosted by Brookfield Tree Warden, Dennis Tucker. The event will include a tree planting demonstration and a reading of the Arbor Day Proclamation. April 30, Sunday, April 30? All right. We need to approve the warrants. Did you want to read them off, Brad?
Sure. Not making a motion, right?
No, I don't believe we need to make-
No, we're just approving the warrants for FY 2321. Accounts payable $232,895.82. FY 2321 payroll $192,712.23. FY 1221 withholding $67,927.09.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Kelly, would you like to take the lead on discussion regarding ARPA funds?
Yes. All right. So currently, we have, sitting in the bank for ARPA funds, we received $1.03 million for, in general, ARPA money. We got another $250,000, which is what I asked you to use. That was specifically for downtown revitalization. We have $408,967.64, of which you've given Ryan $197,000 for Central Street.
Okay.
He is going to need an additional $54,000 for Green Street and an additional $56,711.63 for the Rice Corner Road culvert, if he gets the grant for the culvert. The reason we need the money for Green Street is because prior to signing a contract, we have to ensure that the money is available.
Okay.
It's gone out to bid. The bid opening, I believe, is in a week, and we can't enter into a contract without having the full amount that we're anticipating we're going to spend.
Okay.
So those are those two things. That leaves us a total of $101,256, plus a minus penny.
Okay.
Now, the Water Department is working with the grant writer, and Dennis was supposed to be here, but he's on vacation. So we, I don't have any information from him, but I spoke with Kathy this morning. They're working on a $3 million grant to connect the water system to East Brookfield.
Wow.
They need some matching funds. They were looking for $150. We don't have $150 left, but they are planning on asking East Brookfield to also contribute. Now, I don't know if you want to provide the Rice Corner Road culvert money via ARPA or if you would like to add that to-
Let's add that to the annual town meeting warrant.
To the annual town meeting warrant.
Would be my recommendation, because it's not as time-sensitive.
It's not, and it's subject to, it's subject to him receiving the grant for that culvert. However, the requests for the free cash have, were roughly $92,000 less than what we have? I think that's roughly what we were missing.
I thought you showed me we only had like 50 left or something.
I got more requests today. And I'll probably have more on, but I put everything on the warrant, which you'll be seeing tonight.
Right.
I put everything on the warrant. You can yes or no if you want to do free cash or if you want to raise an appropriate, but keep in mind that whatever you raise in appropriate will also reduce the regular budget.
Right.
So one second here, let me pull up.
Well, it won't reduce the regular budget, but it will reduce any headspace we have between ourselves and the levy limit, potentially increase the tax rate.
Yes. Well, you may find your need to cut because you might be right up against the levy limit. Free cash, where are we? If everything that is being sought in free cash is granted in free cash, we are negative $92,432.63 in free cash.
Yeah, but doesn't that include paying off the entirety of?
The Heller House. Yes, it does. It does. And if you subtract, and I also have the two ARPA requests in here, so you can think when you want to do it.
Right. Because I mean, fundamentally, do we still have the option to refinance the Heller House or reportion there to you?
Yeah, we could probably get away with another ban.
Yeah.
We should pay down some of it, but that'll free up $200, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I get it.
I would rather see you pay off the Heller House and do ARPA money for the CDBG and Rice Corner Road.
Be on the warrant separately.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't disagree.
And pay off, and pay off the Heller House. No, use ARPA money for those two things, and then pay off the Heller House with the free cash. But that, that's where we are with ARPA. So we have roughly $100,000, and Water Department would like you to earmark that for the grant, contingent upon receiving the grant for the connection, which they may not receive, which is we may not receive the Rice Corner Road grant either. So it's contingent, just earmark it, contingent upon receiving the grant.
So Kelly?
Yes.
So the ARPA money, there's $100,000 that's unreserved, I'll say, and then there's some money set aside for the Rice Corner Road project?
Nope. That is still unreserved. That's, that's, I subtracted that because I know that's what he's going to need. That $100,000 doesn't include that. There's actually $200,000 in the ARPA money.
Right. Now, what I was trying to say was that there, in addition to the $100,000 that's, that's unreserved, there's $100,000 that's unspent but is reserved for the Rice Corner Road project pending it, the grant coming in.
Depending, you saying it's reserved. You haven't reserved it yet.
Okay.
And we haven't reserved Green Street, but it sounds like Green Street we need to because-
We do need to, yeah, because that one we can't-
I thought we voted on Green Street.
And the bids may come in lower. We might not need it.
Kelly, I thought we voted on-
We talked about Green Street, but it was, but we didn't vote it yet.
Oh, maybe because we didn't need to do it until, we need, we need to do it before we, we need, that's a precondition of awarding the contract.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, okay, so that's fine.
So we might come in under. We may not need it.
Mm-hmm.
But that, I mean, the ARPA money was intended for street projects.
Yep.
So that's an appropriate use for that funding.
Mm-hmm.
So Dennis was just asking tonight-
For what's left.
That you earmark what's left for the East Brookfield connection if it goes through.
Okay. And does he think it's enough that, between that and?
They were, they were talking about, I believe I was told today, $150-
Right.
Would cover the contingency for the, for the grant if they receive it, but they are also going to seek some funding from East Brookfield as well, because it's benefiting both towns. And the $150, I believe, would cover both.
Would be between the two towns. So if we get, if we do 100 and they do 50, then that gets us there.
Yeah, or, yeah, or if it's more, if they need 100. See, I don't have the numbers from Dennis.
And is this our only alternate water source at this point, east, connecting into East Brookfield?
We're already connected to West.
We're already connected to West, yeah. The goal is to get the Brookfields connected.
Yeah.
Mr. Banish?
Does that three million dollars include a water treatment plant? Because that was discussed.
No, it's just connecting East Brookfield to West, to Brookfield.
I'm going to have to ask that whether or not that increasing volume is going to require-
It's an emergen, it's an emergency connection.
Oh, okay.
It's similar to what we have with West Brookfield, and I think we might have it with North Brookfield already as well.
Kelly, is this, would this be connecting-
I don't know. That's why I wanted Dennis to be here, but he's on vacation.
Would this be connecting us to their treated water so that if we are not able to deliver treated water into our system, we could receive treated water from, from East Brookfield, which we can, which we can already do from West Brookfield?
That is the goal, yes.
Okay. So I, so I think-
I don't know if this will do that, but that is the goal.
Okay. So with, so if that is the goal, that would mean that no additional treatment capacity is needed because Brookfield has the capacity to treat its wells. East Brookfield would treat what comes out of its wells. West Brookfield treats what comes out of its wells.
Correct.
And we just share treated water, not untreated water. That means someone else would need to treat it. Okay. That's, okay. Marty, does that help you or does that, I mean, there's some, there's some ifs and maybes in there.
But it was still discussed that they were talking, they have, I don't know if it's a five-year plan to put in a water treatment plant in Brookfield, and they were talking in the range of $3 million.
Okay. I believe that's a separate, that's a separate ask from what we have in front of us here today.
Yeah, and that is definitely a Water Commission question.
Yeah.
Because there's nobody here from the Commission to answer any of these.
Yeah. All right. So, but can I get a motion to allocate the $100,000 to the Water Department for, in support of their grant application?
You have that motion for discussion?
Okay.
Second.
All right.
Just, is this a, this is a, we can change our mind on this if we, if something comes up and we need to. I'm not expecting to. I just want to understand, is this the final decision? Or is this a, we're just saying, yeah, we're voting that we're intending to set it aside, but if someone says, yeah, we'll give you a check for $10 million if you can allocate this?
No, because we can't apply for the grant.
Yeah, we have to have the money set aside.
Oh, okay.
It's a match for the grant.
Okay, we have to put aside the money to apply for the grant.
Yes.
And then, and if the grant, if the grant, if the grant is not awarded, then the, the money becomes unavailable for other uses.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That helps me understand.
Yeah, that's my understanding of how this works, yeah.
And the same thing is true of the 65K that we've sort of earmarked for, for the Rice Corner culvert, but like she said, we have the option to reevaluate if that's what we want it earmarked for at this point. Any other discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we've got an appointment of Chris Drosin to Rec Committee. Make a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Christopher Drosin to the Brookfield Rec Committee, Recreation Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right. And then, we've got the budget discussion.
It's the warrant is next, or do you want to do that?
We can do the warrant next. Perfect.
Or do you want to do the budget?
Let's do the warrant next. Did I skip over it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I did skip over it. I'm sorry.
Are we supposed to have the warrant?
I'm, I'm sending you links right now.
Okay.
Oh, I'll send you links.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
Do you have the ability to look at it? I could print it, but it's like 14 pages long.
No, that's okay.
It's like crazy big.
As long as no one's going to be offended at me sitting here staring at my phone, I'm fine with it.
All right. When you open it, you'll see some of the things are in green. The green ones are the ones that I've confirmed with, with the different departments that I got it right, based on what they requested. Don't ask me to do things, computer. You know, my friend. Let me know when you've got it open.
Open.
And I can read over Brad's show.
Okay.
Because I can actually see it from here.
So Article 1 is your typical, you know, I put in the date, the time, we've got in, we're going to do the meeting, you know, your normal. Then Article 1 is to accept the annual town reports. Article 2 is to vote to raise an appropriate or borrow for the budget. Article 2 is the budget article.
Yep.
Article 3.
Prior year bill.
Prior year bill, yes. This is a bill from 2019 that they just kept forgetting to put on the warrant, but they're asking to transfer funds from FY 23, which we can do because we're still in FY 23, to cover this bill, so that this is going to finally be paid and then, let's see. So that was going to need a four-fifth vote because it's paying a prior year bill. The next one is been put on here by, I put, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, but this was, there's a lot of copying and pasting going on today. The Treasurer has asked for this funds because prior to her arrival during COVID, there were multiple false claims for unemployment filed, which no one addressed. And so, once the time expires to address it, you lose the right to contest it, and we are required to pay this bill for false unemployment claims filed during COVID. I know, it's a beautiful thing, right? But that is also coming out of FY 23 funds. She has the funds in unemployment that will cover this. So negative, zero impact on, on FY 24 as a budget.
So did this happen and she wasn't the Treasurer at the time?
Correct. This happened during-
It was back when we had the third party that was doing the Treasury work. And there was some contention over whether certain aspects of the work was actually under their contract.
Right. The next article-
I think it might be worth a letter back to them regarding quality of service.
Well, you know, we may not want to recommend, we might not want to recommend because there's been a lot of things discovered which you would, it'd be interesting for you to sit with.
Can you go, I mean-
Any of you individually to sit with me and find out.
I'm not recommending you doing it because the number's not big enough, but I mean, can you go back at them for something like that and hold them liable for the?
For not responding to something they didn't have in their contract? No.
No.
You can't.
You'd have to-
The HR was not part of their contract.
Very explicitly.
Gotcha.
Very explicitly, yes. So the next article is for $40,000 from the Water Department to transfer from the water surplus to cover their capital expenses. This is an annual article. It's on every year. It's self-funding.
What is the source of the water surplus account?
The water bills. They generate revenue through the water bills.
Oh, they have a dedicated revenue account similar to the ambulance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I thought, I thought their revenue went through the general fund. Thank you.
No, it does not.
Can I just ask?
I'm happy for the-
That's why we can use it as offset receipts in the recap.
Another question back to the unemployment thing?
Yes.
So were, those were town employees that filed?
No, no, they were false claims by-
From town employees?
No, by fake people pretending to be town employees.
Oh, gotcha.
For instance, when I was in Lanesboro, there was a claim filed for unemployment for the Treasurer who received the claim, who was working full-time and never left the job. So she knew it was a false claim because it was just, it was just somebody scam-
Yeah, no, and that happens a lot.
Looking for a, someone did not respond so they get approved.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay, so now we have the two articles for the ambulance. I reached out to the ambulance department, and you'll see in the notes that I reached out to EMS. I got an email from Peter Martel, and I had explained that the Selectmen were going to offer a 3% increase and that that was going to be on the budget. So their warrant articles reflected the 8.7. So I asked what they wanted to do, and their response was 3%. They wanted a 4.5% increase overall based on call volume. Now, this is also self-funding.
Right.
Right? So this comes out of their receipts.
And then 3% for the actual?
3% for the actual. So I took their total budget, applied 3%, and subtracted the difference to make it to 4.5. So the two numbers in there are what they have requested.
Okay. So they're asking for their wages to go up 4.5% to reflect-
No, they're asking for their wages to go up 3%.
Oh, and their expenses to go up 4.5%?
And their wage account to go up an additional 4.5% based on additional call volume. So they're expecting to have to pay more active hours?
Right.
Because of calls, right?
No. The overall budget, the whole package, the expenses and the wages would equal a 4.5% increase. 3% of that is applied only to wages.
Okay.
So the way I got the number was, I applied the 3% to last year's wages, the 3% increase. Then I did 4.5 times last year's, subtracted the wages, and got the amount for the expense account, which is not actually, you know, 4.5. It's, it's like 1% increase or something silly on their, on their part for that.
So if, assuming that the hourly wages go up 3%, are, are we funding additional hours for them or we only just-
No, I misunderstood it, that there's additional money that, in the overall budget that's going into the expense account.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is also paid for out of the money that they generate. So this is also not a tax-
Yeah, this, yeah, this is, this doesn't affect the tax bill.
Correct. Okay. The next thing we got was from the Highway Department for $9,000 for line painting. And the reason that it's more than it typically is, is because line painting was not included in the budget for Central Street, and he needs extra money for Central Street.
How is that not included?
You'll have to ask the Highway Superintendent that question.
Can we make sure it's, assuming that there's a center line painted on Green Street, can we make sure it's in the contract for Green Street?
I can write a note for that.
Thank you.
And I don't want to go too far down this, but it was a conversation that we had. I mean, it doesn't seem like people are going to, there's going to be a parking issue.
That's not on the agenda. We're not going to talk about it.
No, but what, what I'm saying is, should we ask him to come in for the next meeting to address?
Yes, that should definitely, that's a very good idea.
Yeah, let's get it on the agenda for the next meeting.
What's the agenda item? What's the title?
Review of Center Street project, traffic and parking flow impact and project management. Because I have some other questions because I had somebody, also, somebody on the work crew comment that the sidewalk they're doing on the other side was an option, part of the contract, and I'm wondering how much of the option was with the money that-
The money from ARPA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, I would like some clarity on that in a public forum.
The next thing is $25,000 for road improvement. Now, I added to every one of the articles like you asked the last meeting to put it as raise an appropriate transfer, borrow, so that you can decide how you want to do this.
Yeah, I also don't want the sums in the articles.
What?
I also had asked that we not have the sums in the articles, that we put those only in the motions.
Oh, I didn't catch that.
Yeah.
But this is, this is a rough draft. This is not.
Yep.
All right, so I'll, I'll take those out. So these are all right now-
So specifically for the warrant, one of, one of my pet peeves is putting dollar amounts in the article itself, because if something changes or if we need to make an adjustment, it, it makes it harder for the moderator to allow the change. Like, say, say we decide we were too tight on money and we wanted to go 20 instead of 25,000 on the road improvement account, okay? That's probably a small enough difference that the moderator would rule that the, the motion met the intent of the article. But by not putting an amount in there at all, it gives us the flexibility to set the amount based off of discussions right up until town meeting.
So we can say it on the floor when we're reading it?
Right, right. So the motion will contain the money. You can even put it in like the italicized notes underneath that estimated, you know, estimated article motion, you know, $25,000, but then if, if we have to change it because of some other reason, it gives us the option to, to-
I don't know if Town Council will let us do that, but I will definitely do it.
They've never made us put the dollar in there?
Okay.
All right. Never made us put the dollar in there.
All right.
Yeah, and because the intent-
And the accountant has tried to force us to put the dollar value in there, but Town Council doesn't have an opinion on that. So.
Well, unless the accountant's operating without a license, I would say that I would go with Town Council.
Yeah.
So what you're seeing now, the 9,000, the 25,000, the 35,000, are all things that I have subtracted from free cash, so that you see, and if you open your, your budget, the one that I sent you the link to, you can hit the free cash tab, and we can move this in and out however you want to do it. All right, so what's the next thing we're doing here?
And so what do we have for free cash and then what do we spend?
All right, so our free cash is started out with $618,279. If we take 25,000 out for the road construction, reconstruction, and if I'm not mistaken, there's still $53,000 in the current road construction.
There are?
Let me, let me just make sure that's accurate though before, because I, I don't know that I, I don't remember if I updated-
No, no, I'm looking at it right here. There is 40, just under $41,000 remaining in that account.
So he's been spending out of it, which I didn't update it with the last expenditure.
Yeah, that's Lori's expenditure report from the 13th. That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, all right. So that needs to be changed in my notes.
And this is my own just learning here, so whatever's left over at the end of this free cash, does that automatically just go into stabilization?
No.
We have to, we have to make a motion if there's a-
Well, and that's what we do, but anything left, we make a mo, no.
No, no, no. You can do that, but that is not a good thing to do.
Okay.
What it does is, at the end of the fiscal, you have to spend free cash by June 30. At the end of the fiscal year, if you don't use it, it rolls into next year's free cash. If you put it in stabilization, then you need a two-thirds vote to get it out.
To get it out.
So if that's what you want to do, that's fine, but it's not your only option.
Yeah, we don't have to spend all the free cash. We can just let it, we-
You can just put it right.
We can put it in stabilization or we can just let it roll over to next year.
Yep. And your stabilization is, is level with what the-
Situation very frequently recently, though, so.
I didn't hear what you said.
You said we've been in that situation frequently.
Yeah, I mean, we remember we didn't have a lot of free cash, now we have to put the amount aside.
Yeah, but we're, yeah, we're spending all, but even though, even though we are getting a lot of free cash, we're still spending almost all of it every year. We're not rolling it over, so one year with lean free cash.
Well, we're at the required and recommended stabilization balance for the town in our budget.
Yes, we are.
So, when you spend it on things, instead of taking money out of your stabilization account, which is what your other option is, to fund these things without hitting a tax rate, you're actually, instead of, you're skipping a step. You can take and put it on in stabilization and then vote it out to pay these things. So you're just skipping a step.
Yep.
And while we're still level with, we're not taking anything out of stabilization, it's not as crucial to put it in, as long as we're not hitting the tax rate with these things.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the next thing, after road improvement, is $35,000 from the Highway Department to replace the canopy over the salt shed. The canopy is 11 years old, and due to constant weather exposure, several spots in the canopy have torn. That's a direct copy and paste from the email that I got from the Highway Department. If we don't have enough in free cash, and you want to, you can vote this out of stabilization. This is, this is a capital expense, because it lasts more than 10 years. So, I'm telling you that because we have more requests for free cash than we have, and this is an option, one of the places we can use for wiggle room.
Well, the other question that I would have is, have we even pursued whether professional repairs would buy us three to five years before we have to replace it, and what the cost would be for that?
I don't know what it's made of, and it looks like it's just a giant tent to me.
Right, which means that you can repair it with giant tent patches.
All right, so-
Lots of rubber cement.
Can you write that down, check with Ryan to see if repairs can be made, as opposed to buying a new tent?
Sorry.
No, it's all right, because that's what it looks like, I'm like, oh, it's a giant tent, that's great.
It is a giant tent, which means a giant patch with a giant amount of rubber cement might do us good for a number of years. Sorry.
No, that's, it's, right now, we're scratching the bottom of the barrel, so we need to find ways to be creative, right? So we have $9,500 to purchase protective clothing. Tom, do you have the amount that is currently, I have 4,000 and something. But again, I said I didn't, I didn't actually update from the most recent, I have 4,800 in protective clothing that hasn't been spent yet.
The protective clothing account is under $1,000 at present.
All right. All right.
Do we know if this protective, if this expenditure is needed for new members of the Fire Department, or if it's replacing worn equipment, or what the split is between those two?
I think he buys it piecemeal, little at a time, as opposed to trying to replace all of it.
Mm-hmm.
But I can find out, you want to know?
Yeah. I'm just curious, how much of this represents equipment wearing out, and how much of this represents new Fire Department members who need their protective gear so they can be safe while protecting the town? I mean, in rough split, I mean, even if it's just, whether it's 25, 25, 75, or 50/50.
Okay.
I don't, I don't need a hard, I don't need a very exact number, I'm just looking for a feel.
I would be shocked if there was enough for every firefighter we have.
Yeah, no, I don't think he would be replacing every firefighter, but I don't know how much it costs to outfit a new firefighter.
Okay. I can ask.
Thank you.
So, the next article, he's asking for 28,000 to make repairs to Tanker One. Tanker One needs $10,000 in brake work, and $18,000 in, wait a minute, $18,000 for repairs and improving the dumping system. Now, if you see the note underneath there, there's currently $37,812 in fleet repair and replace, which has not been touched for several years, and so that would be available as opposed to this article. So-
Just so you know, out of that, I just paid a $10,000 lease for, for the police, that comes up every year.
What are we leasing for the police?
One of their, the 2019 Cruiser, and that's paid out of the fleet account every year.
Okay, so, I looked this number up today, from this week, so when did you pay it?
I just paid, I paid it, it's gonna go on the next warrant.
Do you know of anything else that's coming out of that?
No, that's only once a year.
And it's 10,000, so there's still 27,000 in there? Really?
Yeah, it's once a year.
And how much longer are we paying, why are we leasing a vehicle for the fleet?
We leased it, I believe the year we leased it was because it was a year that free cash was thin, and we needed-
It wasn't even thin, it was non-existent, we didn't have a tank.
Gossamer thin.
All right, so we're gonna need to leave 10 in there for next year, or come up with it, well, no, because she's gonna have to pay out of that, so there's 17,000 in there, so you can reduce this by some of that anyways, as an option. Or you can do free cash, you know, whatever. The next article are the ones that are there every year, just reaffirming the expenditure limit for the revolving accounts.
Just quickly, going back to the fleet repair and replacement account discussion, do we-
Thank you for telling me that.
Would we, if we spent that all down, then we would lose the benefit of the money, of having the money in there, and I, my understanding is the purpose of having the money in there was to give the town some nimbleness, if an opportunity presented itself to pick up something at a good price, we could use that to replace something that we had.
Except that you never add any money to it, and you're paying a lease out of it, which I didn't know until just right this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So your nimblness is not so nimble.
We, it's come to our attention now, and we can pay attention, pay back attention.
And I guess one of my questions would be, would it make more sense to, and again, we're a little bit tight on free cash with what we've got on the, on the plate, right? So in this instance, it would make more sense to just vote the money to do the tanker repairs. I guess the question would be, is how, can it wait until after town meeting, or do we want, or, and are all the repairs at, do you guys mind if I just get with the chief to find out if some, because if, say we have, we paid the $10,000 lease this year.
I don't know when that lease ends, I'm gonna have to check.
I can't imagine it was more than-
I don't think this was either a three or a five.
It must have been a five, the 29.
19, 20, 21, so next year would be the last year.
Right.
So you need to leave, so it's, 10 is out of it, so there's 27. You need to leave 10 in it for next year's payment.
Or what we could do is put an article on for next year's payment.
Right. Yep.
I mean, I'd be more inclined to put an article on there for next year's payment, for the lease. That would leave the additional $10,000 in that account. And I'd almost be more inclined to get with the, this is what I was gonna ask you guys, if you mind if I just get with the Fire Chief over, is to have him, I suspect, even though it's $28,000 in repairs, it's probably not all one thing, like, part of it might be, you know, who knows, welding on the frame, and that's one vendor versus another.
Yeah, he actually broke it down.
Okay.
And, and what he said was $10,000 to repair the rear brakes, which I would think viable.
Yep.
And 18,000 for repairs and improving the dumping system.
Okay. So, I think what I'd be inclined to do is tell him to go ahead and get it in for the brakes, now, using the fleet repair replacement account.
Out of curiosity, when Highway, when they need brakes, do they bring it somewhere, or have they been doing it themselves? I was under the impression.
If they're paying $10,000, it's probably everything, it's probably tubes, it's-
No, but I'm just-
I don't know, I don't know.
I'm just wondering.
They're always working on the vehicles.
They do a lot of maintenance, I don't know if they do a lot of-
Yeah, they do a lot of-
But I mean, are we allowed to tell Highway, do the maintenance on?
No.
No?
No. I don't think that would be work at all.
No.
Yeah. One, you want certified people working on your, on your fire trucks.
Yeah.
For one. And, and two, one is enough. You want certified people working on your fire trucks.
And number two, number one's good enough.
Yes, number two, number one's good enough.
Yeah. So, I mean, my inclination would be tell them to go get the work done on the brakes now.
Yep.
And-
He has another fleet repair and replace, but that's the one that, is that the one that we looked at? How much is that one? I've got 14,000 in that one, but that-
Oh, no, that's gone down, I just looked at it a moment ago, he is down to $3,000.
Okay.
He, my recollection is he tends to hold on to that money at the end of the year, and then spend, and then repairs and replaces the high priority items, and works his way down his list.
Yeah, well, that makes sense, you know, if there's an emergency, you've got the money sitting there, and if you do the repair and replace right away-
I know, because I was watching, like, he's not spending his money, he's not spending his money. Oh, look, he found something to spend his money on.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, well-
So-
Yeah, so, and I'd be, I'd be, I'd be more inclined to take that article, generalize it to, just to see if the town will vote to, you know, raise appropriate transfer or borrow some sum of money to the repair, vehicle repair replacement account, and then, if we are gonna be addressing tanker issues, say that a portion of that money is intended to be spent to do-
Okay, so you want me to change this to-
To a generic fleet repair replacement account article?
Okay.
And then, you know, in the subtext, like notes, you know, sponsored by the Fire Department, there's, you know, they need a certain amount of money, and we want insurance available to do the repairs, kind of a thing.
Let me write myself a note.
Yeah. And then that way, if they take care of some of it now, and then we can just deal with the, deal with the rest.
All right, so this is gonna be, change to, fleet repair, find, or, okay. Really? All right. So we went over the regular, the normal revolving account ones.
Yep.
The next article was put in by the accountant to rescind the borrowing issue, which, oh, look at that, it changed, it shifted on this computer. The formatting changed. Those are the, and it says in the explanation, when the articles were, they came from the 2020, 2021. And then the articles were numbers 20 and 2021, but it was a 2020 meeting. The next article-
And that, and rescinding that borrowing is for which notes?
There are no notes, we never issued the borrowing, we're rescinding the authority to borrow, because we don't need to borrow. I believe one of them was one of the park-
Yeah, it was the Lewis Field track, I believe.
Oh, it was the Lewis Field track?
Yep.
So we have to-
Was one 40K, I don't recognize the other one.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I'd have to look back at the warrant.
I mean, if we don't, if we've satisfied the need that that borrowing was authorized for, then let's cancel the borrowing and get it off the books.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any risk to the town by carrying that borrowing on the books, or any impairment to our financial attractiveness, or does it just matter, does this just clean up?
Well, because we have this authority to borrow for something we don't need, it might hinder our ability to borrow later, because we don't have enough borrowing power for both.
So this does, this does make us less attractive on the loan market?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, then, so it's not just clean.
In a way, be small enough that it doesn't, but that's the theory behind rescinding.
Yeah, it may not make the difference, but it does count against us. Okay, let's clean this up. Thank you.
All right. I put in, I didn't get a request for cable, I put in what we had last year. Okay.
Cable?
Yep.
What about the articles above it?
Oh, I'm sorry, the longevity.
Yes.
The longevity, let's go to longevity, because that's exciting. I do not have the police longevity included in this, because I reached out to the chief and asked him, but I contacted him after he had gone for the day. I believe that the longevity for the police department is in the police department budget. If it's not, this will be closer to $18,000. This is part of the personnel-
Handbook.
Handbook. This is not part of the personnel bylaw. So this is optional, the town can vote for it, you can support it, advisory committee can support it, or not support it, in all the same directions.
Yeah.
So, but that is the amount minus the police department, and that includes the, because the spreadsheet has everybody who qualifies for longevity, that includes the library director's longevity as well. So if it's going to be part of their budget, it would come out of here, that $1,500 would come out of this number as well.
Yeah. Kelly, is there, what is the reason for having this as an article, rather than putting it into the operating budget?
Because it's optional, it's not part of the operating budget.
Okay.
So you, you should still raise and appropriate it, as opposed to-
Yes.
Borrowing or transferring.
Yeah, or free cash.
But it's, yeah, or free cash.
Yeah, this is an operating expense.
It is an operating expense, if you choose to support it, but it's not always going to be, because it's optional, it's not, because it's subject to appropriations in the handbook.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's why it's an option.
Okay. Can we, in anticipation of the town meeting, would it make sense to have a schedule of the longevity bonus, like, how many years, how much they get? I don't, we're not putting any names on it, I don't think we want to do that, but-
Well, that's public record, and I have that, that's all part of the spreadsheet.
I understand it's public record, but I think the point here is we're saying, here, it's like we have this many employees at this level, at this much, this many employees at this and this, and help people understand the source of this number. It's like-
So you would like that available for town meeting?
If it's not too much work.
It's not, no, I can just, I can change it to employee, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Yeah, or just do like population, and whatever the steps are in the different longevity bonuses.
Yeah, five at this level, like, 1 to 5 years, $500 a pop, 7 employees. It's like, that's, that's the level of detail I'm looking for, if you, if it's easy to provide more-
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's easy peasy, I'll just copy the headers, because I've got that, that's the headers on the spreadsheet.
Beth, I think Jeff has a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The, as far as the advisory committee's concerned, we're still pending on the library determination, so we're meeting next week, so according to the budget, however it's been resolved with this, is the line item in the budget gonna be 75,000, and then this 1,500 is coming in after the fact? So that next year, the base, 3% will be based on the 75,000 and 72,000, or how is that gonna?
Well, the idea is that we're keeping the longevity bonuses out of everybody's base, so that it's not part of the 3%.
So the budget we should vote on should be 75, which is what was basically recommended. Is that correct?
So, when I sent, when I sent Caitlin the budget, you'll see that, that the longevity is its own separate line, for the selectman's recommendation. So you've got the total salary for the selectman's recommendation, and then the longevity, which is equal to the 72 that she's asking for.
Okay, but there should be an extra line item in the library budget that says longevity?
It is in the, in the one that I sent you, yeah. It's there.
Kelly, will that be, for consistency, would it make sense to have no longevity in the operating budget, and to handle the longevity for every item via the single article?
Absolutely, yes, that's why I have the total in the warrant article, but that's entirely up to you, that would be my recommendation, is no longevity in the budget at all.
Okay.
So there's no confusion.
But it's, it's in there because it was in the request from the library?
It's in there because I wanted you to see, so they requested this, her salary as a lump sum, which included the longevity.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and we-
And in your recommendations, I deconstructed it.
Mm-hmm.
So that she got exactly what she's asking for, but it was separated.
Okay, so-
But I think that it should not be part of the actual operating budget, because it's not actually a mandatory annual increase. You could get a board down the road that doesn't want to, doesn't want to do it, and you don't have to put a warrant article in for it, if you don't want to.
Okay, that makes sense. So, the select board will make its own decision, or make its own, come to its own conclusion as a group, the advisory committee will consider it, and come to its own conclusion, and then we'll talk amongst ourselves, and we'll either agree and high five, or we'll talk it out.
That's a good way to put it.
The reason I'm asking the question is, I'd rather not have to go through another iteration, I'd just like to vote it as what we think it should be, and hopefully it's, according to Kelly's recommendation, or advice.
Okay.
Because that way, we don't have to do the 3% on top of the 1,500 every year.
Yeah, we, yeah, we don't, we don't want raises, we want to make sure we understand that the, yeah, we don't want the, it sneaking into the base pay and then getting amplified by the raises.
Right, yeah, it compounds, it compounds the percentage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, all right.
Unless, unless I did something wrong here, what were you, if you added up all the warrant articles, what were you coming up with?
Well, they're not all taken out of the nature.
Right, no, I know that.
So, I came up with negative $92,432.63.
Okay, so you're negative.
I'm negative.
Okay.
I'm way negative. And part of that is-
I was counting up with 681,000, which is still negative.
But not as negative as what you came up with.
So, part of what I subtracted from the free cash is money we are required to keep in the free cash. We received $19,000 in recuperated money from CDBG loan that was given to someone who sold and had to pay back the money that they got. Had they lived there forever, after so many years, it would go away. However, they sold, and they had to pay back the difference. We are required to keep that money, even though it's gonna hit free cash, we're required to keep that money in case somebody else in that program, because it's not closed out yet, needs the funding, so that we can supply it to them. So that's subtracted from-
So we have to subtract 19,000 off of the 618,000.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Would it make sense to just have an article to allocate that money to, and have a warrant article saying, putting the money aside to take it out of the free cash cycle? And you're shaking your head, no? Okay.
Nope. You either, you either, well, actually, thinking about it now, you could do that, but it, we may, the program may close and then you have to re-put it back in.
But the warrant article would be written to state that when the program closes, the authorization for the money dissolves and the money flows back into free cash?
I don't think you can do that. I don't think you can determine what goes back into free cash.
You can't sunset?
No.
Because I thought when an article had served its purpose, any remaining funds automatically float into free cash?
No, it moves back into the general fund.
You have to explicitly vote it back. If you put, if you put money into an account via a warrant article, you have to vote it back out. It doesn't matter if you got 50 cents left, you got to vote it back.
Even if you did everything you said you were going to do if there are 50 cents left, do you have to vote it out?
Yes, yeah.
Well, that's a pain in the butt.
That's why it's just going to be-
Welcome to sit there. I love being municipal finance.
It's, I know, it's accounting. I've dealt with non-municipal accountants.
Trust me, my brain broke on that as well.
Okay, I, that's, that's news to me. I was always under the impression that it would just, that it was easier to get the money.
No, operational budgets, operational budgets-
Yeah, the operating budgets break at the end of the year.
Basically does that.
But warrant articles never go away. Until you vote them away. Or you, after so many years, you tell the accountant that this is no longer needed and then she rolls it into free cash. But that's usually five years down the road.
Okay, okay, so it can sunset, but it has to, it takes a while to sunset. It's better to just-
Just to leave it there. Because if the program closes in six months because they're out of funds or they finally get the paperwork done, then-
Given the schedule, putting the money aside doesn't-
And this is a Pioneer Valley thing. And they unfortunately lost all of their staffing for this program.
And so theoretically-
It's just going to languish. But they just hired a bunch of new people. Because this is a 2019, I think, or 2015 program.
So if everyone from town voted to do this, and it's negative, we just make-
Well, you can't.
You can't.
You can't vote negative. You all are going to have to pick what you're going to let and what you're not going to let.
Yeah, but what we have to do fundamentally is, and this goes back to why I prefer the flexible article motions. Is that worst-case scenario, if we know everything on here, we don't have enough free cash. We can force certain articles through our motion to go to raise and appropriate or borrow.
So where we're at right now-
Or pass over, or pass-
Right, so at this point right now, we have to figure out how to cut 100 grand out of the warrants.
Well, we have to prioritize.
Yeah. So we have a couple of different options. We can, we can take stuff off. We can reduce the scope. There's a number of them as I'm going through. Like the cemetery says, hey, we could do one road instead of two. We could do 30 instead of 60, right?
We got a $5,000 request for a copy machine.
Right, I mean honestly-
Say no.
Yeah, right, I mean we could say we're not getting it.
Not this year. You might want to do it next year, but not this year.
Can I make, are we going to have a projector at the town meeting?
Not usually, no, because it would come down right in front of you.
Well, the town meeting's at the elementary school.
Right.
And, right?
Yeah, and they do have a screen that we can, but it would be bonking you on the head. It would come right down in front of the table.
It would just be nice if we had it up on a board when we're voting through things to let people know where we stand.
So when I do the budget, which hoping y'all will come to, the budget presentation, that's done with a PowerPoint, with a big screen and pictures and explains everything and how we got the numbers.
Do we have a date on that?
May 18th.
All right.
So one thing I would recommend though is, and this, we could talk to Kathleen. It's just see if we could get a whiteboard and like literally just have some of that.
That's a good idea. Get one of those giant sticky note pads. Then I can pre-draw everything and just flip through it.
Just flip. Actually, we could just get a flip pad and basically, you know, if the article is approved, it's one number. If the article's not approved, it's the next number. Flip it and circle the one that applies and cross out the one that doesn't.
Yeah. So the next article on here, after the PEG access number funds, which comes out of PEG, it doesn't come out of the budget.
Yeah, that doesn't impact anything.
Yeah, PEG has its own account. So we're transferring money out. So, yeah, so take that out of your free cash.
Hey, how much do we, how much do we have in there at this point?
In the PEG account? I would have to look at the special revenue. I don't have that. I can find it, but I don't, it would take me too long to do it now.
I'd like to know two things. One, how much of this year's budget do we still have? And two-
We have all of it. We've spent none of what we've had because we can't find anybody to run the cable station.
Right, so, all right.
So we don't, we may not even need this article, but-
Right, and I know Jason is-
Jay.
Or Jay, I'm sorry. I don't know why I want to call him.
Beth? Beth, the PEG cable access account in the special revenue report is, if I read this right, ending over $200,000. There's a negative, so I'm guessing that means that there's a cash balance in there?
The negative is the $200,000. The special revenue report is written backwards. So anything that's negative is actually positive. That's what's in the account.
Right.
So, yes.
Yeah, I remember that from accounting. It's like revenues are negative, expenses are positive. It's just like-
Why? It's really counterintuitive, really. All right.
I'm wondering again if we maybe need to go out and see if there's at least a professional vendor that could be editing.
I have reached out to, it's been advertised in, I don't have the folder. Do I have the folder with me? I didn't bring that down here because we weren't going to talk about cable tonight.
My bad. It's just because we're on the budget.
But I have, I have been, we've advertised in five newspapers. I put it on, actually Karen put it on the Mass College Boards. I've reached out individually to tech programs in three different colleges. I've reached out to the high schools. I've reached out to Spencer. I've reached out to Brimfield. I've reached out to Charlton. I've reached out to, and I have had, we reached out to Sturbridge. And actually, Mr. Hulgraf has actually been helping me and talking to people to try and find somebody. And he reached out to Sturbridge and the person from Sturbridge didn't respond to him. I called the town administrator. I'm like, listen, I sent an email. Your people aren't talking to me. And she's like, no, no worries. I got an email right that, like within 15 minutes. But it's a single person who does theirs and he's a town resident. It's not a company.
Are they being paid?
Not relevant. He's not interested. So the, I didn't ask. When you're not interested, I'm done with you. I've got to move on. I've got things to do. So in Spencer, I reached out to the Spencer Town Administrator for a different issue actually that had to do with cameras and salt sheds. And he put me in touch with Spencer Cable Access TV, who has agreed to talk to Sharon and I.
Yay.
Yeah, right? A little happy dance.
Could start a whole company just editing municipal?
And so that's where I am. And if that doesn't pan out, I was told that Charlton has a very active cable group who are very excited about doing cable. And I said, I will give them a TV studio. They can have it. All they got to do is, so we're going to talk to Spencer Cable Access Television. We got an email from him this week. We're talking to him, I believe, next week. And so I have, honestly, I work on this. There's some time devoted every single week to this.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jacob has got several of the videos uploaded. He's got them converted now and he's uploading them. So you're tech people, right? So as you know, with cable, it is designed to download super rapidly. So you got like a 90 download and you got a 10 upload. These are taking 15 hours a piece to upload. Because they're 43 gig to put them on YouTube. We're not dealing with the cable right now.
43 gig, that's, for displaying on YouTube, okay. I'm just thinking maybe we could down, create something with a lower resolution with a smaller file size.
It looks like Sturbridge does that.
But I mean, but Jacob's doing the work.
Yeah, so what he's done is he is now using his own business server, which is the opposite. It's 90 upload and 10 download. But that's not really, I mean, that's a very kind thing for him to do for us, but that is not part of the job. And the next person who comes in, because he's interim until we find someone, they're not going to have that capacity. So, but it's moving forward. He's got three uploaded. He's got another three that are ready to go up. He's got some that are working.
And when you say they're uploaded to YouTube, what about to the, anything?
We have nothing with the cable channel because we don't have anybody to operate the cable channel.
Okay, but I mean, we're, we're getting into YouTube, which is something.
Yes. And when I hired Jacob to do this, I did it with the understanding that he did not have the time because he has his own business to deal with the cable portion of it. I asked him strictly to be interim cable coordinator to do uploading, to get the backlog of meetings edited, uploaded onto YouTube. Because at least they're somewhere.
Right.
So little baby steps, little baby steps. All right, so we have the town clerk's request for a new copy machine. Now, 5,000 is what we, we did a little bit of research. He's looking for a copy machine that's similar to the one that's here. He'd like this actually, same copy machine. And when we bought it, it was-
He had me out of trade-in.
Manufacturer list price was $12,000. But with the trade-in, we paid 3,900 roughly.
Yeah, like almost $4,000.
But that was a while ago. So the ballpark estimate is 5,000. Now, he also said if we can't do this with free cash, he's okay with it. He's not looking for anybody to raise an appropriate money for this.
Okay. So, it sounds like the copy is probably going to come along.
But we're confident that $5,000 would get him what he needs or what he wants?
Want is a much better description.
Okay.
Yeah, because I mean really at the end of the day, it's walk 40 feet and go use this copier.
He's connected to this copier. It's just very inconvenient. He's got to bring his special state paper out here with the copy machine. It would just be more convenient for him to have a good quality copy. He doesn't have a good quality copy. He's got two garbage copiers in there.
Yeah, I can see supporting him and making it so that he's the printer, that something right next to his desk is something. He puts his special state paper in, prints the official document he needs, puts his town clerk stamp on it. But it's like, maybe we can get him that for less.
Yep, that would, and I think he'll be okay with that because I explained to him that we are really, really tight with free cash this year. The next thing, which I didn't put in the free cash, is $568.50. The garden club has been taking care of the flowers on the common and on the gazebo and on the mall, the full flower boxes for years. And they would like to be reimbursed for the flowers this year. And that was the price that they came up with to do the flowers for this summer coming.
Yeah, and this is to cover their costs for buying the flowers that they will then plant and take care of?
Yes.
This is all material?
And this is something that they've received, they've received reimbursements from the cultural council before. But now the Mass Cultural Council, everything is online and-
And they are not?
They are not allowing, well, they're making people pay taxes. They're reporting it as income. And the garden club doesn't have an EIN and no one's willing to put their social security number in to get this 500 bucks. So, and I don't blame them, certainly. You know, it's going to the garden club to buy seeds for the town. So I offered to put this in a warrant article for them so that we could continue to have flowers and they wouldn't have to eat the cost.
I'm good.
Okay, so the next article. The cemetery department is looking to replace their 2005 Bobcat mower. It's not working properly and they need $12,000 for that. That one came, I put in the free cash.
Well, that's actually one of those ones is can we check around the secondary market and use our fleet repair replacement account and see if we can find us something now that's not $12,000 for framing it?
You could also short-term lease it. But I mean, I'm just wondering why, I think it's a longer discussion than I want to have tonight. But I mean, why does the cemetery have their own?
Because they have their own people that mow. And the other mowers are out during the week, being used by other people mowing many, many other locations in town. We can't have one mower. It's not enough.
Yeah.
That's why they have their own. They mow a lot.
Yeah, and they don't collect that.
And it's very, you know, it's, I would imagine that it's got to be a fairly accurate machine so as not to destroy anything down at the cemetery. The next article is for $60,000 roughly. That was kind of an estimate that was given on what it would cost to pave the two roads that are in the cemetery that they want to repair. And Mike said that if there's not enough free cash and you want to split it, that he would be happy with that. Now, right below that is $20,000 to bring the water services up to code. Now, Dennis gave me information on this. Give me a second to find it.
Oh, I do have one question on the mower. Is that for the mower portion or is that for the Bobcat?
That's the replacement of the Bobcat mower. So it's a replacement of a machine with another machine that will do the mowing.
I wonder if you can do it when you're leased on something like that? You can go to United Rentals or something?
True.
Where did it go? Oh, it didn't go far enough. All right. So we need to replace the water lines at the cemetery. Dennis said that this is priority lines. They're over 100 years old. They're lead pipes, which are illegal according to DEP. And he's putting materials lists together and that I should have numbers soon, but he went on vacation and I don't have those numbers. But $20,000 was the estimate that we have. That is, we have to bring it up to code. The Mass DEP has determined that all water that runs through anywhere, that's public water, has to be drinkable. And even though it's not used for anybody but the grass to drink, it has to be brought up to drinking standards. And so this is really not an optional one. This is one I would recommend you fund completely because this is not an option. We have to fix that. And if we fix the roads next year as opposed to this year, we're going to tear them up to put the water lines in anyway. So let's do this and then worry about the roads after. I don't know how you want to work that, but that's-
And what are they paving? Just the paved portion?
It just says that he's repairing the roads. I'm not familiar with the cemetery.
Probably only a quarter of it's paved.
So I don't know if it's repair or if it's adding, well, it is repair, right? That's what he said.
I'm just wondering why not just put down the stone like they do in the rest of the cemetery? Why does it have, why do those last four roads have to be paved?
Is it the last four roads or is he repairing the paved roads? I don't know the answer.
If you look at the cemetery, there's only like the last four are paved. The rest of it's all gravel.
I guess that's a question you'd have to ask the cemetery commissioners.
Could we ask them to come to the next meeting? Have them send a representative to the next meeting so we understand what they're doing?
Okay. The next article is for the library building repair maintenance. I never received one. But I have it in there because they have until Monday at 3:00 PM to provide me with a warrant article. I don't have any warrant articles from the library.
Is this the library building maintenance account?
Yes.
Now, you mentioned something to me that there's 6,000 in there. Is that in their budget for maintenance?
No, that is not. This is, you're talking about 18 Common Street. There's $6,000 for maintenance and utilities.
And so this is for the actual library?
Yes, normally this, this is a warrant article that has appeared multiple times. And that's where I got it from initially. But I did not receive a request for any funding yet for that. The next is, so this is one that I'm actually asking for. Under the bylaws, under Section 12 miscellaneous bylaws, Section 3. You can see that I wrote the bylaw out for you. The town has permission to make temporary repairs on private ways and provided that, the private way has been open to public use.
Yeah, we have to, electrical inspector?
What?
The electrical inspector article was before the one you're talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I missed that. Yes, so our electrical inspector neglected to hand in his payroll last year. And he came to me and asked if I would pay him and I said no. Because it was a prior fiscal year and I didn't have the authority to pay him and he needed to submit his payroll on a regular basis. And he said, yeah. And he said, "Yeah, but..." And I said, "No." I said, "I will put it on a warrant article, and if they decide they want to pay it, fine, but I will never put it on another warrant article, so make sure your payroll gets in on time." Which he has been very good at doing. But now, we're paying him quarterly instead of monthly, which is what was messing him up in the first place. So, that's what that is.
So, we're good going forward? Now, it's just, he worked for us in the last year and he...
Didn't get paid.
And he didn't ask...
That's six months.
And he didn't ask to get paid?
That's half of his pay. And he came to me like four months into the year and said, "I forgot." And I went, "That's too bad, isn't it?"
Will this require...
Because I don't have a legal authority to go back and pay you with last year's money.
Does this qualify as a prior year bill?
Yes.
With a forfeit's vote?
No, I don't think it does, because it's not a vendor. It's not a bill.
It's what, payroll? So, it's different?
It's payroll, and it's different. Yeah. So, we'll ask town council.
I don't know if, I don't know if we even have to take that to town meeting. I think you might actually be able to pay it, because it is payroll, even if he didn't submit his stuff.
No, we can't, because the money's gone.
I think, 'cause the account closed.
Yep.
It's like, yeah, we could deficit spend to pay his wages.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is you could deficit spend this year's account and cover it transfers.
I'll double-check, but I think this is the way we have to do it.
I'm fine with doing it this way, but I think we may actually have the option to just deficit spend.
But I mean, Kelly, he did the work and to, so he is effectively owed, or he has earned the money.
It's a stipend. It's not an hourly wage.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't think it falls under the same as payroll, because it's a stipend. If he was paid an hourly amount, yes, we would absolutely have to pay him.
Yeah.
But because it's a stipend, and he can take it in a lump sum at the end of the year, and he can take it whether he works a minute...
Or not.
Or 500 hours. It doesn't change. It's a stipend. It's a thank you for coming out. So, I don't think the rules are the same. Because it's not technically payroll, but it is not a vendor, so it's not a bill. But I'll double-check. I think part of this was because Lori said she wouldn't pay him as well, because it was prior year. But I will, I will make sure.
Yeah, but let's just double-check.
But again, this, you know, he came to me at the beginning of the fiscal year, like two months, two, three months after the fiscal year, so the conversation was a long time ago.
I get it. Right. But let's just make sure that we're not stepping on it and if there's...
Okay. Alright. Now, back to the gravel.
Back to the gravel. $2,500, that makes perfect sense.
So, people ask all the time, "Why don't you fix my private road?" And the bylaw says you can fix my private road. But if you look at that, what I highlighted in the bylaw, it says, "Based upon annual appropriation thereof." Brookfield has been putting $1 in every year. You can't fix the road with $1. So, my suggestion is that we spend $2,500 and we buy a pile of gravel.
Just for that?
First come, first served. It's completely isolated. It's completely just for private roads who meet the qualifications in the bylaw. And when it's gone, it's gone. Next year, we do the same thing, whatever road we didn't do last year.
So, those individuals will come to the highway to take that gravel?
No.
No, highway would... Highway would know it's a set aside.
So, they'd have to follow the process in the bylaw that I actually put in the warrant, which will be out of the warrant. It's just there for your, your, so it has to have been open for six years. They have to have more than, at least three dwellings along the way. The, it's gonna consist of filling holes and depressions in the surfaces of the way with sand, gravel, sanders, suitable materials, but not resurfacing, no permanent structures. It can have grating or scraping, but not more than twice a year. And it shall not include reconstruction or repair of any drainage facilities. But all the abutters have to sign an agreement to hold the town harmless, all damages and claims resulting from their affairs. And the select board have to declare the repairs to be required public necessity. So, it's not gonna, I'm gonna drive up there and grab gravel. And Ryan's not gonna go, "Oh, I think this road is one that needs to be fixed." The residents have to follow this process, but at least now we have the gravel.
Yeah. My recollection is, we always set aside that dollar for, the intention was, by authorizing that, that meant that when the snow plows, my understanding was that it was there so that when the snow, we were plowing them in the winter, our insurance would cover that activity.
You don't, you don't need that dollar. You don't need that dollar for...
For them to be covered? Okay, that, that, my, but that was our, that was my understanding of the rationale for $1.
It wasn't insurance. It was that our highway superintendent had asked for it to be put on the warrant annually at $1, so that basically the town was authorizing him to do the work.
Okay.
Which actually, the bylaw authorizes him to do the work and mass general law authorizes the work.
But nobody was smart enough to...
So, you actually don't need that.
Okay.
Which a lot of towns did it for a long time, because you did, but they changed the law, so you don't need it.
Yeah, so it was legacy.
Alright, thank you.
Then I would like to pay off the 18 Common Street. We didn't include it in the borrowing, because we had the money to pay it off. And if you decide to pay off, you know, drop $100,000 off of this and pay off $150,000 and redo the loan for $100,000, maybe we could pay it off next year, but we have the money to do it.
Who's the...
So, rather than pay the closing costs and the interest every, every time we roll the band over...
So, we have a separate bank loan going for that?
Nope. We have, yeah, we have a separate borrowing for it.
And if, and if we aren't gonna pay it off, then we need to make sure that we have, we have, we budget some principal and interest for whatever amount that we're not gonna pay off. Or no, if we paid off, we wouldn't have any interest.
No, so what we would do is, we would take whatever you vote, so you say you vote $100,000. The loan we have right now comes due. We take that $100,000 and we pay that toward that loan and we roll the difference over.
Right.
That $100,000 also pays the interest and the closing costs, which is like roughly $600 for the closing costs every time we roll this over.
So, we don't quite get $100,000 worth of principal? We get...
Right, yeah.
What is the loan rate that we're paying?
I don't know what the band is for that particular.
With the, with the prime up to where it is, it's probably like a half percent above prime. Whatever the...
I'm just wondering what the interest rate is for that compared to if we had moved it into borrowing, into the bond? Because we had talked about putting it into the bond.
It may actually be lower than, the rate on the band is probably lower than the bond.
Yeah, but it won't be if we roll it over again. Because the interest rates have skyrocketed since we got the band.
Now, do you have to redo the borrowing if you pay it?
Yes.
Why is that?
You have to redo the borrowing, because, because the band is a very short life. It's a one-year life. The borrowing is for one year. So, at the end of the year, you pay off with whatever money...
So, it's not like a 20-year or 30-year mortgage?
Nope, it's one year, it's a one-year one.
One-year state note.
Yep. We weren't able to borrow, yes, prior, because we didn't have any audits. We didn't have, and when we did have audits, they weren't satisfactory audits. We didn't have a bond rating. We had to go out and get a bond rating, so it was very, it was very labor-intensive to get the borrowing. Alright, so, I don't know what you wanna do with that, but you know...
I would just take the dollar value out of the article.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna take the dollar value out of all of it, but I wanted you to see what people were asking for, and I didn't actually remember that you said that, so I apologize.
I mean, as much as I'd like to pay it off, that's something we don't need to pay off.
Right.
Would it make sense to put this article towards the back of the warrant?
You do not need to pay it off. You do need to pay it down. And when you roll it over, you're gonna be charged a much greater interest rate. And it made sense at the time of the borrowing, because it increased the cost of the borrowing so much that we had the ability to pay it off. There was no need to pay 40 years of interest on something we can pay off.
Or maybe you only pay $150 instead of $250, or whatever the number is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we'd still pay the, we'd still pay the loan origination fee and even, I mean, if, if we're only kicking the can one year, it's not like we pay, you know...
Yeah, and hopefully we'll have decent free cash, because we've taken a lot of money...
I think we'll need to do some research to be able to explain to people at the town floor, like, here's the impact if we only pay off, if we pay off like $150,000, here's the impact. Or not for the town meeting, but for your budget meeting or whatever.
Well, I won't know what the impact is, because I won't know what the interest rate is.
Until the band expires.
Until the band expires and we have to go out for a new one. So, I can't calculate the impact on what we're gonna do. But it made, it made more sense, like I said, at the time of the borrowing, because we had the funds to pay it off. Why continue to, why, why have the town pay interest on this for the next 40 years?
Right.
Or however many years the borrowing is for, when they don't need to. That's just charging extra money for no reason. And that's why I was saying we should pay this off. I would rather see you pay this off completely and then use ARPA money for the two things that Ryan wants, and you've basically pulled back almost 100% of what we're negative for free cash. Because he wants $100,000. We're $92,000 in the hole. And if you take the copy machine out, then we've got enough free cash for the rest.
Why did my brain just break?
Because you're tired and it's late.
Okay.
You work for a living, and now you're here doing this. Just, you know, spitballing here. We need to put, alright, so, I have an article to create a school roof capital special purpose stabilization fund.
Okay.
Because we put the money for the school roof in the capital stabilization fund. My concern is that that money needs to be separate, so that when it's time to vote it out for the roof, its intention is known, it's always been intended for the roof, and when it's time to vote it out for the roof, we won't have to explain where all the money came from, why are we only taking this out, why are we taking that out? This is what we put in? This is why we put it in? And this is the only reason we can use it, is for the school roof.
Is that a new article? I don't see that in here.
No, it's in here.
It's in there.
Where?
There's a $75,000 from free cash to the...
So, there's one, there's two $75,000 ones. One is to create the roof capital special purpose stabilization account. Then, right below that, we're transferring the $75,000 we put in last year into that account. Then, the next one is taking $75,000 of this year's free cash, so that we'll have a total of $150 toward the roof, because the goal was to have $300,000 within five years, which is $75,000 a year.
So, there's only one raise inappropriate for the 75?
No, there's no raise inappropriate.
No, or well, no, well, there's money from free cash.
Yes, one of these takes from free cash, the other one takes from an existing stabilization fund and transfers it to a, an explicitly purpose stabilization fund.
Because the article was purposeful last year.
And what year do we need the $300,000 by?
So, last year was when we did the first one, and she said the estimated remaining life of the roof is five years. So, that's why I did it this way. So, we've got enough to put it in, so that's why I was...
Jeff?
Yes? I just wanted, you were at the same meeting we're at, when we asked about the principal. She said it might be three years now, whether the five, it was just, it was a little bit of a...
Right.
In, in short term rather than longer term.
That would make sense, if you've seen the buckets at the school.
Yeah, no, it needs to be revised.
So, that's why I just, I just wanted to raise it to everyone, so that it's, I mean, before when we're thinking of the five, now it might be...
No, it's pretty urgent, yeah.
Yeah. I did ask for assistance.
More urgent than we had thought.
Okay.
I spoke to Lucas McDermott from Ann Goby's office today. He came to see me, and he said that the school roof is a little overreached, $600,000 is a lot of money, because I asked for a whole lot. I told him that we had $150 after this town meeting, if it's voted in to go toward it. And then, he told me that there is a competitive grant for accelerated school repairs that'll be opening up early soon, so I'm gonna be looking at that as well...
Nice.
To try and get that money. And if we don't need it, because we get the grant to get the school roof, we have matching funds if we need them, and if we don't need them, we can vote them back into capital stabilization or out to be used somewhere else.
Or we can put them to use. Okay.
Alright, so we have... That's why we pay you the big bucks.
So, I'm only at a deficit of $12,000, but we can go through it later.
Alright, I'll walk you through what I have in there. So, we have... Mike is also asking as a town clerk for $5,500 for a new AccuVote voting issue.
Kelly?
Yes?
We seem to have skipped a few, the opioid settlement reserve fund.
Again?
Yes. You went, you went from the, and actually, I think we need to go up to the OPEB liability. That's, because we talked about 18 Common Street, and then we made a big jump.
Yeah, because my, my computer, I hit the, because I'm using my...
You hit page down?
This, and I paged down instead of scrolled down.
Got it.
I need a mouse. I'm a mouse kind of person. So, OPEB liability fund, the DOR and auditors and the bond raters look at how we're putting money away for our upcoming 2033 OPEB liability. So, we need to put money in OPEB. And it doesn't matter that we put a lot or a little, they want, they just wanna see a consistent amount.
They wanna see progress.
Yes, and they want it to be consistent. So, we started with $50,000, so that's why I put that in there.
Do we have a, do we have a feel for what our actual liability is or what our funding requirement is?
We have it actually all mapped out.
Uh-huh. How bad is it?
It's like three, you know what, I'm not even gonna try and remember, but you, you send Amy an email, you will be absolutely stunned and amazed.
There might be a comma shortage after she sent you that email?
It's millions of dollars. It's millions of dollars.
Lovely. Alright, thank you.
Alright, ooh, it did it again, it jumped. Little son of a... Anyway, the next one, the town has been receiving opioid settlement funds. We have a whopping $5,586.42. They have decided in their infinite wisdom that these funds can only be used for an opioid impact. So, we need to create an opioid settlement fund special purposes stabilization fund that will allow us to use it. We can only use it on Narcan, because that is our only impact. So, there's an article here to create the fund under 40, Section 5b. And there's another article right beneath it to allow us to use the money to spend on Narcan.
Kelly, as, if it's a stabilization fund, will it require a two, oh, I see, two-thirds vote on the next one? First one's to establish, second one's to authorize the draw.
Yes.
You're way ahead of me, thank you.
But then, but then to spend out of it, is it gonna, does it have to get back to town meeting somehow, or is it...
No, because the next article is a two-thirds vote allowing us to spend it on Narcan.
And if we need more Narcan than expected, the authorization will allow them to buy the Narcan they need?
We only have $5,000. We're not gonna, we're, we're gonna get dribbles of $100 at a time. So, I, the way this is written, we should be able to just buy Narcan with it without actually having a dollar amount. Now, I don't know if that'll apply by town council, but this was what was provided to me by the accountant who got it from, attending the opioid settlement fund use seminar put who got it from attending the opioid settlement fund use seminar put on by the state.
Okay.
And is it only the police that we surveyed about the impact? Or have we also talked to the EMTs?
Narcan. They need Narcan. So what's happening is the Narcan is on an ambulance. They buy it, they then give it in turn to the police department. So this will allow us to resupply that for them.
All right, and I think...
Okay, we talked about the roof.
Yep.
Then we have the voting machine. The police chief is asking for $9,000 to buy a new server for the police station. We need to, I don't have this article fully written, but it's in there as a placeholder because under the personnel bylaws, in order to have a position to hire somebody to, we have to create it at town meeting. Personnel bylaws do not allow us to pay anybody who isn't actually listed in the personnel bylaws. We don't have an assistant library director position, so we need to create the position. From there, we need to fund the position. Now, we have a little bit of a glitch with that because I believe the funding for that position is in the library budget under library assistants. If you fund this position and therefore budget, you will be double funding.
Well, do we have to do a... Do we have to do an article to fund the position? Or do we just have to create the position?
I believe the bylaw says you have to create it and fund it the first year.
Could we create it, but then it specify? Let's see if we can create it and see if maybe we can just specify a separate article authorizing that the assistant wages can be used to...
Well, it is, she is an assistant. She's an assistant library director.
Right.
So an assistance is an assistant assistant, right? It's just a different pay scales. 90% of the money in the assistant budget is for the woman that got this new title.
So we don't need a funding line?
I don't think that we do, but I'm not positive, so...
Sounds like I don't think we should, I mean, because you're pointing an assistant as an assistant.
It was something weird in the bylaw that made me think that...
Thinking back, my recollection is that we, in the bylaws, we created the town administrator position, but that year we didn't fund it at all.
No, you don't have to fund it the year you create it, but I think you do have to fund it through an article. But I'm not positive, but I will check.
Okay.
Wasn't it funded for half a year?
That was at a different meeting, Marty. Is that at one meeting, we created the bylaw and then at a subsequent town meeting, I don't remember the sequencing or the scheduling, we had the article that had the half-year, authorization of a half-year salary. And it's like, and we hired Kelly at the very end of that period, as I recall. Or she started at the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Yeah, she came to her town meeting and see if the position that we had her 90% hired for was actually gonna get funded.
I wanted to see if y'all were crazy. That's why I went to the town meeting.
I was.
You just want to see how crazy we were.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of a given.
I was a stealth operator in that meeting. Actually, I had Amy with me at that meeting.
Do I really want to take this job?
I really, I had Amy with me and when I saw the moderator, I was like, "Oh, wow, that's amazing. This moderator has really got this crowd under control. Yep, I definitely want to work here."
Yeah, that was the first year. That was his first year, I believe.
We had a moderator like that in another town for many, many, many years. And man, those meetings were like boom, 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 boom. They were great. All right, so the general bylaw changes. I have two, I was asked by Jeff to make the advisory committee five members.
Like our boys from last year. Yeah, we have voted in committee to change.
So I have come up with an alternative to that. Because the state law applies as to what a quorum is, unless there is a contradicting law or a bylaw. If we do a bylaw that says a majority is, for the town of Brookfield's boards and committees, is a majority of the number of sitting members, we don't have to change these boards anymore.
Nice. Let's do that.
And it'll adjust automatically. So if you would like, I will write a bylaw for that.
Yes.
So that was my suggestion.
I think that flexibility would be good.
Then I have the personnel bylaw changes. If the article passes, then it has to be added to the personnel bylaw that the library assistant is there and it has to be graded.
I'm sorry, I need a better explanation of that. When you're saying the majority is the number of sitting members?
Yep.
So what constitutes a quorum?
If you've got three members, it's two.
If you've got five members, it's three. If you've got seven members, it's five.
Okay, Jeff. One point, just from a practical standpoint, I think I can get one more person at some point. I mean, I've tried all year, three, I haven't got anybody. I think we might be able to get to five. So I'm hopeful that in the future, we'll be stable at five. If someone goes off, hopefully we can find one more person. And I want to ask you, Beth, because the person that I spoke to said that he knew you, so I wanted to just make sure it's a, someone named Kevin Outland, something you know?
I know who that is.
A financial planner?
Yeah.
Yeah, he sounds familiar. I probably would recognize him on sight, but I don't know everybody's last name. I'm bad at last names.
Yeah, he mentioned, I met him at a bar, but he, I was just talking, he said, "Oh yeah, I know that." So it was, I talked to him.
Yeah, no, if he's interested, he'd be good.
Yeah, if he's the fellow I'm thinking of, I think that'd be great.
He's younger. He's also a musician. He's a musician. Yeah.
Okay, yep.
What's his name?
Kevin Outland.
He's probably, kids are...
His kids are younger than mine.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he's probably just recently joined the pack and that's why I don't recognize the name. Thank you.
Yeah, but I think with five, hopefully we'll be able to...
So we can change it down to five and then do that other bylaw in addition?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can someone get me a list of, I know we keep throwing around 23 open things that we have to fill?
If you go on the town website and look under employment volunteer opportunities, you will see a list. Let's see, let's see, let's see. So some of this stuff is redundant because I added it because I was getting a little punchy and didn't realize it was already added. Because this is a draft. So it says bylaw, personnel bylaw, add assistant library, assistant library, yeah, assistant library director. We need a simple majority for that vote. I have been requested to discuss vacation and personnel time. We have people who are hired that don't get any time until they've been here for two years. Two years without a vacation working for a town is too long.
It's crazy.
This has come up before.
I thought we talked about it and we said to go ahead and propose an adjustment.
Okay, all right, so I'll write something up for that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we asked the, or recommended that the personnel board should make a recommendation on that.
I don't know that they'll have time to meet and do that before this is...
So if you want to make a recommendation.
Whatever we need to do, let's get this taken care of. If that's doing it ourselves, let's do it.
And we can run it by them after it's in the warrant. We can always pass over it if they don't like it.
I have 611.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what I missed that you have.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
For the numbers?
I have 611.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go through it in a minute.
I haven't looked through the numbers yet.
So that's vacation, all right. And then another thing that I would like you to look at, not necessarily this year, but it definitely should be done, is we need, because the bylaw says you can't have this position without it being in there, we need to create a treasurer collector assistant position so that we can have somebody in the wings. If the treasurer goes on vacation or gets sick, somebody can cover. If the collector needs help during bill collecting for, you know, massive motor vehicle commitment, she's got somebody that can come in and help her. And it would be a person that would fill both of these.
So would that be a new hire or...
It would be a new position and it would be a new hire. Or if somebody here already wants to, can pick up more hours, they can do it.
Have you had, I mean, this, the old boards clerk, is she willing to work more hours?
That's a discussion for another time. So we have a zoning proposed, zoning bylaw.
Hold on just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Is that Warren article replacing the tax collector's request for that clerk position? Every year she asks for the clerk position, she can't find someone, and so it's, was that a different position?
We have somebody to work for the tax collector when she needs them. That's bonded and that money is available and she's refusing to use the person. So I don't know what to tell you.
Okay, I mean, I just, I don't want to approve both of them.
No, I definitely wouldn't approve the assistant for the collectors. I have minutes from previous advisory committee meetings where she didn't want a, an assistant and she asked for the funds to, that were the assistants so she would have more hours because she didn't need one. So I'm confused by this whole, I need an assistant thing because I've got minutes saying she doesn't need one. Who's printing?
Me.
Oh, oh. How did you do that?
I just wanted to make sure we...
Yeah, it would definitely not be both of them. It would just be the one, and I wouldn't be funding it if we created it. If the board wants to create this position, I would not be funding it this year. I would just create it because it needs much more development. But if it's not in the bylaw, I can't do anything like that. So there'll be no funding of that. The next thing is the petition from the zoning, from the planning board and the marijuana, which you can read at your leisure. I got that this afternoon. And I have two citizens petitions to add to this as well. And one is to make the town clerk an appointed position and the other is to make the tax collector an appointed position. Citizens petitions, yes. So they will go on verbatim the way they were written.
And those have been properly submitted and they're...
They have been and they've been verified. They are on the warrant.
Kelly, I didn't hear the last part, but the tax collector would be what, was it considered?
Would be appointed as opposed to elected. So under the law, we put this on a warrant, the town votes for it. It then has to go on a ballot where it could pass or fail. If it fails, it's over. If it passes, this is, I'm reading to you, General Law, Chapter 41, Section 1B. "Any incumbent of such office or board serving at the time of acceptance by the voters shall continue to hold said office and perform the duties thereof until the expiration of the term for which said individual was elected or otherwise vacates such office." So it says specifically on the petitions that this article does not remove the existing employee from his or her position, does not imply nor suggest any dissatisfaction with the work of the employee currently holding the office. It is simply changing from elected every three years to appointed and it would benefit both the employee and the town of Brookfield. Because what happens is if, for whatever reason, let's just say Brenna's family decides to move out of town, we don't lose her because she's not elected. We would lose her if she was elected because she wouldn't be allowed to hold an elected position as a non-resident. And if, and when, if she's still here or Mike wants to retire, then we can hire somebody who has the qualifications and not just somebody who, we begged to run and then...
A resident.
And then they decide they only want to work one day a week. So it actually benefits the town for continuity of employment. And that's the whole warrant. Do you want to...
I just have a question about the... So you're doing your budget thing on May 18?
Yep. Well, if you voted to have any answers, I will put my budget thing on May 18.
Is there gonna be a separate earlier meeting on the marijuana stuff to avoid...
They've had three meetings on the marijuana stuff.
That's the planning board.
That's the planning board. That's not us. And they've had three meetings on it already.
Okay. I'm just concerned at the town meeting that it's gonna go...
Oh, it is. It is. It's gonna go just as like it did last time because there are very polarized opinions on it.
Actually, hopefully it'll go better because while we still will have very polarized opinions...
The planning board is supporting it.
The planning board is supporting it and, you know, sponsoring it so we don't have the disconnect between what's being presented and what's been, you know, duly reviewed and...
And it's mutually agreed upon at this point. There's no...
Yeah, it's the perfect compromise. No one's happy.
Yeah. As I say, the planning board's recommending it.
So do you want to go over the free cash numbers to see where we differ?
Yeah, I want to figure out where we differ.
Yeah, real quick.
All right, so we start with the same number, right? 618-279.
Yep.
Subtract 25,000.
Yep.
Oh, I subtracted 19, okay. 25,000?
For road reconstruction. So I have them in a different order than the Warren article.
Oh, hold on a minute. Well, I have, the first one is being...
Because I have them in a different order than the Warren article because I plugged them in as I got them into the spreadsheet.
So just go ahead and go through them.
All right, so then I have 9,500 for months.
Do you have the spreadsheet she sent?
For...
She, hold on. She sent a spreadsheet earlier today. Did you send that to everyone?
I sent it to Brad yesterday. He's the one who showed me that I could share it.
Okay. Yeah, and because there's a free cash tab on that spreadsheet. So now you can look at Kelly's, at what she's looking at and follow along.
Yeah, and then you'll see if my cells are right or wrong, right? Because I don't do math. I let the computer do it. So I have 9,500 for...
Lines.
For what?
Lines.
Lines, yep. But I don't have it as written as lines in here. So then we have the 2,800 for the fire department.
28,000, right.
28,000, yes, sorry. This doesn't belong in here. We have 20,000 for the water lines in the cemetery. 5,500 for a voting machine. 60,000 for the roads in the cemetery. 35,000 for the canopy. 5,000 for a copy machine. 9,000 for a new server. 250 for the house. And you'll see in yellow the 54 and the 56 for the complete streets and the Rice Corner Road. And then I have 9,000 for line painting, so I have a double one in it. No, the 9,500 was for protective equipment. I just didn't type it in.
I didn't, that's probably where I'm coming up with something different because Green Street and Rice Corner, I wasn't, I didn't see it hard.
Yeah, those are in, yeah, those, I think Kelly said she had those in there and so she expected the deficit to go down.
Yeah, so I put those in there because I expected those to come out of ARPA funds. That's why they're highlighted in yellow. So the 95 was actually not the line painting. It was a protective equipment for the fire chief. And the 9,000 is for the line painting. Then we have 50 for OPEB, 75 for the school roof, and 19 that we have to keep out for CDVG.
So...
So I am negative 92,432,63.
Yep, and if you back out Green Street and Rice Corner Road, that's 110,000 backed out. That brings, that changes us to a positive 18,000 of free cash remaining.
Which is why I suggested using the ARPA funds because now everybody gets what they want.
Yep.
Okay.
Without having to raise inappropriate any of it.
Anything that shouldn't, that isn't raised inappropriate just because it's appropriate to do so. And just because we earmarked the ARPA money doesn't mean we spend the ARPA money because it's dependent on the grants anyway.
Whereas if we do this and we vote it into an article, we gotta vote it out again.
Yeah, so...
So yeah, I got 18,279, which is actually like, because the 19 is sitting in there. This is available free cash still. And if you take the 5,000 out for the copy machine...
You're missing the 1895 in the...
What, 1895?
2,500.
Which article?
Which is from... Let me reread it.
I don't have anything in there that's 1895. There's no 1895.
That's gonna come out of his car.
Okay, that's already coming out from that. And then this is coming from the gravel.
The gravel I didn't have in free cash.
You were taking it from raise inappropriate.
Yep. We can take it out of free cash now, but it's gonna be a continuing expense if it works the way I'm hoping it will. So it shouldn't be a free cash. Or you could just only fund it subject to free cash. That's entirely your...
Well, that's, yeah, and that'd be a legit approach, actually, since it's kind of a optional thing.
So we can drop that into the free cash.
Yeah. Let's do that one from free cash just because I think it is, I do want to highlight that we're being nice. Of course, we're also being nice to the suspension on our ambulances, so...
Yes, yes, okay, so let's see, gravel. No, no, no fingers. What did I say, 25 for gravel?
And one thing I don't see, and it's the one thing that would make me cautious on doing both the cemetery roads, is we had asked Ryan to get a quote on the Lewis Field Road.
And he said it was... And he said it was way too much money. So he couldn't do it with his road funds. He was going to try and do it with his, his road funds. He said it was way too pricey.
Well, I understand that, but did he ever give us a number?
Nope. All he said was it cost too much.
Okay, so we need a number and we need an article.
Write that down.
For it. And while I'm thinking of splitting the difference between cemetery and, and, in terms of, instead of 60 on the cemetery...
Are you talking pave, are you talking pave the...
Repaving the Lewis Field, the Tucker Road. If we're going to do that, they should probably do drainage, too.
No, 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 now you're out of, now you're out of control. You are way close to the levy limit. You can't raise and appropriate that money. You don't have enough in here.
I, I understand, but my point is just paving that, I, I mean, I drive, I go to Lewis Field a bunch with my kids and my thought is that without...
Proper drainage.
Without proper drainage, it's the, we're not going to get nearly as much life out of that repaving as we would like. And so what I am saying is that if we are going to do this, we should look into what it's going to take to do it well, or at least get certified that the drainage isn't a problem and that it's, will be okay.
So we have plans from the, because of the new activity that we're doing through the park grant.
The, the field leveling that we just authorized.
Yes. So we have plans that has drainage included in that.
Okay.
And that should be consulted before you consider doing anything with that road because it might just be all chewed up after they go.
Yeah, I was going to say, I wouldn't touch that road.
So you may want to wait till next year.
I would definitely agree with that.
I worry about that next year because I don't want to have to repave it twice.
Okay. Fair.
Yeah.
I'd be interested in talking with the cemetery because again, it's only like probably four roads that are paved.
Well, they said they would, they're only doing two and they're, they're going to split. And he's okay if you split it if you want to pop another, you know, 30 grand off of that. And that's a guess. They haven't actually met with the paving company.
They haven't even got an estimate.
And the guy, the guy who does the paving for us this year may not get the quote next year, may not get the bid.
Yeah.
I always thought it was interesting, too, that they paved the cemetery because I thought the historical nature of it, they...
Wouldn't.
Right.
What do you, specifically, do you want me to ask Ryan to get an estimate for repaving the cemetery or Lewis Field or both, for those roads? Well, it sounds like the cemetery commissioner doesn't have a formal quote for that.
No, he's meeting, Ryan and the cemetery commissioner are meeting with the current person who does the paving at the beginning of next week.
Okay.
So I knew that, they asked me to put this on here kind of as a placeholder.
Okay.
And they were guessing it'll be around 60.
While they had, if they have the paving guy, I know the cemetery commissioner is the one that is functionally called a meeting, but can he get a quote on Lewis Field at the same time if they're talking then?
Will that quote be good next year after we're, after we're done doing the upgrades to the field?
We have plans for that upgrade, correct?
We do. They've been engineered and I think it's getting ready to go out to bed.
Okay. Is there... That's, that's the field leveling, correct? So...
Yeah, I sat with Cory and Kathy and asked, because it's, it's not fitting. So I asked them to move because there's already drainage in the field.
Right.
And where they're going, what they're going to have to do to create the pitch they need to create and then to level it, it's going to need, it's going to cross over into the drainage. So I asked them to shift everything. So I don't, haven't seen those drawings yet.
Okay.
We're trying to get it so that it disturbs the drainage as little as possible. Because it's going to, you know, increase the cost exponentially if we have to re-drainage the fields.
Yeah, re-engineer drainage. Okay, that makes sense.
Beth, do we, sorry, Kelly, do we have a, an expected schedule for the work on that field? Just curious.
No, we're still working on the drawings.
Okay, thank you.
Once the drawings have been approved or, or, you know, Cory's done with them, then we'll look at going out to bid. But I asked, like I said, I asked them to make some changes to try and kind of squeeze it into the spot it's already in. Because the pitching of it is going to change the drainage. Because they're leveling the field and they have to pitch it so the water runs off. So we're still, and that's another reason I think that the paving of the field is premature, so...
What about the quote?
Quote for the cemetery.
Quote for the cemetery.
We'll worry about the, the rest afterwards.
Okay.
So we have, should you so choose to, roughly $20,000 in free cash remaining.
That's a pretty amount to...
And that's because I took out the, this 95,000 should be up here. That's why I put it on the spot. It's the protective clothing.
For 9,500.
That's what I meant. Thank you. All right. So that's the end of warrant and free cash. Cracking a sweat here.
So it does technically fit so long as we fund those two with the ARPA money?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we're done with the warrant discussion or is there anything that you gentlemen want to consider just taking off even though we're technically fully funded?
And would you, would you like to vote that it's approved as it sits right now? Do you want to rearrange the order of them? If I don't receive any other warrant articles by the end of Monday, then it will be done.
Yeah, the one thing that's the unknown, I guess, would be the library improvements.
Yeah.
And how much do we have left?
20.
20.
That's an existing account that they have, they already have money in that account.
And they may not need it. That may be why they didn't ask it because they had so many things fixed.
They have $8,600 in it and my understanding is that that's a, that's typically been used as a standing repair fund. That they don't, that, that they have not typically, don't always have a project for that money, but they use it to deal with problems that come up.
Well, they typically have, they typically have a laundry list that...
Hmm, that they work through.
Yeah. So I don't take any issue with any of the ordering of these. None of them, none of them, I mean, could it be optimized maybe a little bit better? Yes, is it worth...
I mean, I can chunk each department together if you'd prefer that or I honestly prefer to have it mixed up because it keeps people in the audience.
Yeah. I don't, I don't see a problem with the order, do you guys? The one request I do have is to take the numbers...
I will take the numbers out and I will put them together. And actually, what I'll do is I'll keep this one to do the motions off of and I'll do another one with no, with no numbers on it.
That'd be great.
And if I don't receive any further requests, then I can, I will have it off to town council and the advisory committee by Friday, on Friday, at some point of next week. Not tomorrow, of next week.
Okay, and then...
Oh, did you want me to do the article for the treasurer collector or no?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Or do we need a motion on that?
For the assistant position?
Yeah. Yeah, that, like I said, it won't be funded.
Well, you already have it in there. Do we have to vote on that?
Well, we need a, we need a bylaw change to create the position, right?
Right, yeah.
And then we would need to fund it.
We don't need to fund it because I'm not going to look to hire anybody for this position until I can work the bugs out between, because we've got assistant money for the treasurer and we've got assistant money that the collector is asking for.
Okay, so you could hire someone into that position and the collector's money could pay for them when they work on the collector's side?
Correct.
And the treasurer's money could pay them on the treasurer's side?
Correct.
Okay, so you don't, so we need a position, we don't need the funding?
Correct.
Okay. You want a motion?
Yeah, I think, I think Kelly was looking for direction relative to the, can I just go with it or not? And I'm inclined to say let's, let's make a motion to approve it, like with the stated adjustments, kind of a...
I move that we ask Kelly to prepare a, an article for the annual town meeting warrant to create the assistant collector slash treasurer position, consistent with the discussion we have had to this moment.
And I will get the personnel board.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Aye.
I've been up since 5:00.
Aye.
Aye. Ditto. So how much of a train wreck would it be if we decided that it's 9 o'clock and the rest of the agenda is going to go on the next meeting?
That's fine. Your next meeting is May 6th?
Fourth.
This is May 4th?
May 4th, Star Wars Day.
Which is the bud...
Yeah, yeah.
May the 4th be with you?
Yeah, so that's my daughter's birthday, so I'm going to have to get clearance to whether I can come or not.
You said she likes politics.
You know, you can always shift it to a different day. You don't have to meet, although it's nice to have a standard day and time. It's not a requirement.
I'll bring cupcakes.
The other question is, do we need a, do we need a meeting next week during the day for anything or...
For police...
I, I, yes, I think we do.
I think we do.
All right, what day is it?
Because he just got me when I was looking, remember the word?
Yeah, yeah.
Just before this meeting emailed it to me.
So what's the earliest meeting that we could, can we do like Tuesday lunchtime next week?
If we post it tonight, yeah.
Next week, Tuesday lunchtime?
Not, no.
I'll be there.
Let me just double check.
I proposed it and then I'm like, oh, we'll check. Well, at least I'm double checking before we put it on the calendar, so...
Tuesday, oh, what is this? Tracy Dagger is coming at 1:30 to do testing for lead upstairs. I don't think they need me for that.
No.
So executive session? Under 3:00.
Well, you know, I have a doctor's appointment.
I have one on Monday. I feel like my cortisol levels are going to be a little...
Do you want to do Wednesday? Are you available on Wednesday?
Technically, I'm supposed to work hard for Wednesday, so that makes it hard.
All right, so what about...
And I'm meeting with the police. I have a scheduled meeting on the 26th at 3:00 with them.
So you want to meet prior to that? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, I don't know what the rules are with rescheduling with that.
Can we do, could you guys do...
You can do Monday.
Could you guys do like 4:00 PM on Tuesday?
No.
No, you can't do Monday. We can't, we can't schedule it in time for Monday. So Tuesday's as soon as we could do it.
You know, I can cancel, the appointment I have is somewhat optional on Tuesday. I'll go ahead and cancel that. So let's do Tuesday at noon.
Let us know what your hard stuff is and I'll try and keep everybody focused.
Okay. It would be 1:15.
All right.
And I have a 1:30 that I can't skip or I would prefer to avoid impacting.
Do you want to start it earlier at all or...
We could go a little, well, yeah, we could go, I could get there by about 11:45. That'll get us a full, yeah, let's do 11:45 start and that'll give us a full 90 minutes. Okay? All right. So...
Are you skipping your executive session? We don't need it, right? Because we didn't have anything?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to, yeah, we didn't have anything available to review, so we're going to do that. Basically, we're going to do that executive session on Tuesday.
And we'll bump the budget over to May 4?
Yeah.
And can you put 2? I don't know if we'll need the other one, but for the police chief, at least that way it's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would be under, excuse, reasons 2 and 3.
2.
2 and 3.
Which one's 2? Which, which exception's number 2 for executive session?
Number 2 is, is for contracts, not collective bargaining, which would be the chief.
Okay.
And number 3 is for collective bargaining.
Right. What about the, the matter you and I discussed just a little while ago before, before our meeting started?
That can be, well, you've only got an hour and a half, so you may want to add that one to the 4, but...
Well, we could add it to Tuesday because we might not have anything on the second contract.
Okay. Yeah.
So what's he want to do?
2 and, yeah. And so it, it falls under 3, so...
So it's going to be 1, 2, and 2 3s? The exceptions, right?
Yep.
Do you want anything particular to be written under the, under the second 3? Just leave it, okay?
Nope. You don't need to add anything to the litigation. We have, you need to, do you want to approve your minutes? Acknowledge your reports and then close your meeting?
Sure, okay. Can I get a motion to acknowledge the police reports?
Do you have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the select board minutes from 3:31? And then two sets from 4:06?
I crossed up 4:11 because I sent it, but no, I think Kelly sent it.
Yeah.
All right, you have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then acknowledge the fire report from January, February, and March of 2023.
Do you have that motion?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Got it. All right.
Trying to help you along, Beth.
Thank you. That was quick. We get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, did we want to, what do, I mean, I don't need to be, I'm assuming my employer's not going to want me here on the 4th. Do we want to change that date or...
Your employer.
The boss.
Okay.
Do you want to, do you want to do Tuesday the 2nd?
We need to check the calendar to see if the room is booked.
Okay. I can look it in my town government?
Check it now? I, I can do it.
Or is it a manual calendar?
It's, it's just in the other room.
Okay.
Right? There's nothing. Like that's up to date. I have dated today, but I just need to get on my chair.
I don't like the first week of the month. I literally have something every night. East School or something?
Yes.
Just a closing comment. Just wanted to thank you for your dedication and effort, making this board functional and efficient.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
No, 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 no. What did you say?
It's written on May second. Cultural Council.
It's in the calendar as May first, and I remember her saying May first, so that might be...
See what's posted.
Let me look. You know what? Let me look right now. Let me look online.
They have a meeting posted for April twenty-fifth.
Huh? Yeah, you can't hold it. That's true. And the town election is the first.
Oh, yeah.
Monday.
Yeah, you vote on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
So they can't have that meeting on Monday.
So it's got to be...
It's got to be Tuesday. So...
They need to repost it, then.
Well, and I guess the question is, they've got this room. Do we want to do a meeting down in the police station?
We can do that. I'm down for a change of scenery.
Well, they could, but you know what? Sometimes I go the path of least resistance, and you know what? He doesn't mind going to the... Do you mind going to the police station?
No. Is there Wi-Fi there?
There is...
That's the challenge.
Ooh. There might not be, but you know what? I can open up my hotspot for it if you need it.
All right, I can probably hotspot myself if I need it.
There you go.
Well, I'm going to need somebody's hotspot if they don't have...
I don't think they have a public network there, so... But...
You want to clear it with Sharon, too?
No, this would be the irregular meeting.
That would be a regular meeting.
On Tuesday?
Yeah.
Is that possible, Tuesday the second?
Well, if Sharon can't do it, we might be able to get Jacob to do it, but it's something we need to get... And we don't have to videotape it.
Yeah.
If we... You know, this has to get done.
Yeah.
Because they can't do a budget presentation without a budget.
Yep.
And that's what we're discussing on that day.
Yeah, it's going to be the budget.[1532.11]